Good evening, everyone. I am reconvening to open session. The regular meeting of the Fairview District 72 Board of Education is May 17th, 2023, at 7:00 PM. We have already established that we have a quorum. I would like to request that all members of the public be respectful of everyone at this meeting. If you could please silence your cell phones and join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. First item of business is to approve the minutes of the regular enclosed meetings of April 26, 2023, and May 10, 2023. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes, please?
So moved.
Second. Are there any corrections or comments regarding the minutes? Okay, well, all those in favor of approving the minutes of April 26, 2023, and May 10, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, the minutes are approved. Next, we have the approval of the payments of bill. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of
So moved.
A second.
Okay, are there any questions regarding the bills? All right. The bills are approved to be paid. And we're going to move on to the PTA report. Do we have a representative of the PTA, Steve? Awesome.
Good evening. I'm Steve Larenas, one of the PTA co-presidents. In the last month, we've had teacher appreciation luncheon on the 28th during the PD day for staff. We believe the staff really enjoyed what was prepared for them, and it was just a small token of our appreciation for everything that they do throughout the year. We also had our first, our last general meeting of the school year on May 3rd, where we elected the new co-presidents and the recording secretary, which will take over on July 1st for the next two years with everybody else who stays in place. We also had, sorry, the Teacher Appreciation Week from May 1st through May 5th, where we tried to spoil the teachers a little bit more. So we hope they saw that we really appreciate everything they do throughout the year, throughout the years, really, for all of our students. We had our Dangio's Benefit Night on Monday, May 8th. So we'd like to thank everybody who participated because portions of the proceeds go to the PTA. We had our multicultural night last Friday, seemed to be a big success as we celebrate diversity that makes our district so special. Last night, the Park District recognized the PTA along with other organizations and families who helped maintain the little libraries throughout Skokie. We oversee the one at Shaq Park. And then things that are coming up, we have parents preparing for the eighth grade graduation party on May 26th, seventh grade parents preparing for the eighth grade graduation reception that'll follow graduation on the second, I believe, or the first, sorry, thank you. We also have Portillo's on that night of the first. It'll be the final benefit night of the year. We have room parents and guardians beginning to prepare for the end of the year classroom parties on June 2nd for kindergarten and June 8th for first through fourth graders. And finally, as Cajal and I prepare to step out of our roles as the co-presidents in the next few weeks, we want to thank the board, the administration, the staff, and parents, and everybody who's supported us for the last two years. So thank you very much.
And Steve, just wanted to thank you and Cajal for bringing back like the PTA and the functions and the parties. Multicultural Night was awesome. I have not experienced it since I've been here at Fairview. It was always the conflict in my schedule, but it was so fun. It was a lot of people. It was awesome to see every culture that we have here. So thank you for all that you have done. We appreciate it. Yeah.
And just from the administrative team, it has been a pleasure working with you and Cajal. You have put so much heart and soul in helping revive post-COVID, all of these fun events that help build community, and I think you've been very successful in doing so. So thank you for all of the time and effort and energy. I know it hasn't been easy at times, but you know, we really have appreciated working with you.
All right, we're going to move on to school activity report. Does anyone from the board or administration have good news that they want to share?
Sure, I'll start. Today was our third annual Wellness Wednesday. Our SCL team, in addition to supporting our students, a few years ago got together with their Insurance and Wellness Committee and developed a Wellness Day for our teachers and our staff. So in our teacher's lounge today, we had breakfast, and they actually had lighting in there and music and things to go, teachers go in there between classes and relax. It was very nice, but that team puts a lot of hard work into this event and through our committee throughout the whole year. So thank you to that group, and hopefully the teachers enjoy themselves.
I just want to give a shout out to our art show last week. So Catherine Chong, Morgan Swenson, and Steve Larenas put together an amazing show, kindergarten through eighth grade. It's the first show that we've had in four years, first one in my time I've been able to experience due to COVID, and it was great having so many families in the building. Students were walking around getting to show off, you know, all their artwork. There was grandparents here and neighbors and guests. So it was a really great opportunity to, again, welcome community members into the building and have our students show off all the hard work that they've been doing during their arts time with our teachers.
Thank you. And that same night, we had our orchestra and choir show, which was really cool. It was kind of like the night of the arts. And so people that were here for the art show, many of which then came into the orchestra and choir show. We had a pretty jam-packed auditorium, so I think that energy is always kind of incredible for the kids. Just to see their growth from the first concert to the second concert is also amazing. Also bittersweet for our eighth graders that all musicians endured so much in their four years as musicians here and sticking with, continuing to play in both orchestra and band. Our band concert is tomorrow night, so I thought I'd do a little plug for that. All of our bands, Jazz Band, will be a part of that as well. And I just wanted to give a shout out as their principal with the students that are behind me, kind of nearly behind me. I don't know if I necessarily like that they're right behind me like this, but they gave us a presentation, myself and Dr. Whitaker and Ms. Kilpatrick, an opportunity at lunchtime to just meet, hear their presentation, had a lot of really awesome questions just about, you know, our roles, but then also about construction. So it was really cool because Dr. Whitaker got to talk to them about their roles maybe next year, if they're going to be returning as eighth graders, and then making sure that the eighth graders know that they'll be welcomed back to see the building and see all the changes. So really excited for them. I'm sure they're kind of nervous, but they're going to do an amazing job. So thank you very much.
Any board members want to add? All right. Next item is our administrative reports. If you could please introduce the reports to the board.
Sure. Well, it is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Jordan Kilpatrick, our Director of Community and Student Engagement, as well as a group of our Fairview students who have served on the Student Equity Advisory Committee. Mr. LaPaca alluded to this a little bit, but we had the pleasure of meeting with this group of students who have really emerged as leaders in our building a couple weeks ago, and we ate lunch together, and it was just a wonderful opportunity to hear from our students what's been on their minds, what questions they have. And so I'm really excited for the board to hear from them this evening. So Ms. Kilpatrick, I don't know how you want to do this, but you know, they can stand with you, they can stand up front with us, whatever they're most comfortable with. But I'm really proud of you all for doing this tonight. It's not easy to talk in front of adults or in this auditorium, but I know you're going to do an awesome job. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. I just want to say that I'm really proud of this group of students, as this is our first opportunity kind of rolling out our Student Equity Advisory Committee. This was birthed out of the recommendations and just some further discussion from our equity audit with Dr. Yvette Dubiel. So I'm very proud that we were able to pull this together, and we've done a lot of programming that has been awesome. So I want to turn it over to these students so that they can have an opportunity to not only introduce themselves, but to also just kind of give a really quick overview of all that we've done this year. So this is our Student Equity Advisory Committee.
Ms. Kilpatrick, can you have them introduce themselves?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
I'm Bella Mohit.
I'm Liliana Lopez.
I'm Melanie Rodriguez.
I'm Cora Swanson.
I'm Megan Pham.
I'm Maryam Odisha.
I'm Aha Sabri.
I'm Lilian Shermer.
I'm Hannah O'Fana.
Our mission is to foster student-driven equity by having students share their equity experiences at Fairview so we know what's going on inside of the school.
This is the overview of our current members. So Noah Mohit, who's not able to be here with us today, is our chair. Mary Odisha is our co-chair, and Megan Baum is our secretary.
Hi, so I'm Megan Pham, and I'm the Secretary of SEAC. And basically, the benefits for students are that we are provided the opportunity for our voices to be heard in the student body. And for us, we have a direct impact in improving the environment and cultures at the school by giving our personal opinion on what the school functions like. And from this group, one thing that I could tell you is that we gain a lot of leadership, speaking, and presentation skills. Some benefits for Fairview are that they are able to gain more student insight, they're able to like get some recommendations, more personal opinions on what they can improve to help our school, and they're a better position to make their policies, consequences, regulations to benefit their student body. And they're also able to make any necessary changes to make our students feel more inclusive and more equal to one another. So in the fall, we had a One Fairview Rally Day, and its theme was unity through diversity. And basically, this was just a way for our student body to gather around and just see like what makes us more diverse. So how do we create unity at Fairview? First, we want to cancel out all hate speech because, you know, in our generation, some things are being said, and we just want to make sure that those people know how we feel about that. We don't want any race or bias-driven bullying because some problems that we have at Fairview are that some students are feeling targeted, and we just want to cancel out those components completely. So these are some pictures from our One Fairview Rally Day, and basically, we had students K through 8 create these posters that was basically to draw out, to create a piece of artwork that made them feel all different. So we had some culture-driven art pieces, we had some language, some, you know, just like personal favorites. And we recently just sold 150 t-shirts to Fairview families and students with the title "One Team and One Heart." It was $10 pushed to the push coin for each student, and every student really enjoyed these shirts because it made them stand out in Fairview.
So after our Fairview One Rally Day this past February, we did a Black History Month series. This series promoted younger Black history makers to show that, just to highlight some of the cool things that they've done in the past. We chose younger members because we felt that students could connect more with those members. So for example, we chose people like Yolanda Renee King and Amanda Gorman.
So this is our 2023 to 2024 goals and programs and like what we have done so far during the beginning of 2023. We have, we made these flyers to go out to sixth and seventh grade, for sixth graders to, we had them write like an essay, like we had student recommendations for these students to show us how, what and why they want to join the Student Equity Advisory Committee. And if, basically just us to see how they worked and, you know, but we made these flyers. And now our timeline is April 24th, we opened our application window. May 12th, the acceptance letters went out to students and parents through email or through a actual letter. May 19th, we is, this actually, this coming up Friday, is where we're going to have a nice meet and greet and with our new members and our current members now, and we're just going to have a nice pizza party.
As eighth graders graduate this year, we'll be gaining four new members to supersede them in our committee in the schools of 2023 to 2024. Our five remaining members are Isabella, Megan, Melanie, Cora, and Liliana from seventh grade, and our four new members next year will be Davina, Lilian, Zion, and Anna Palmer.
Our goals for next year include another One Fairview Rally Day like we did this year, two student-led roundtable talks, and invite students from DI Clubs, Student Council, APITA Club, which is open to all seventh and eighth graders. We will do another Black History Month series. We will do a student survey, which this year we were unfortunately not able to do because of time problems, but we're planning on doing that next year. And another presentation meeting with Dr. Whitaker and Ms. LaPaca like we did last week, and another end-of-year board presentation like this one.
Right. And that completes our presentation. I know we usually do not clap at the board meeting, but I would really like us to give a round of applause to these students for their courage and their work. I hope they're awesome, round, like so proud. And if there are any questions that you all have for me or for our SEAC members, you're open to them.
Just a question to all of you is...
This year, this point, the beginning of this point.
If there's one thing that you loved most about the committee, what would you say?
Um, one thing I would say is that I think we were really able to connect as a committee. We were able to, because this is a very diverse, we have, right, so Asians, Hispanics, members of the African-American community, and I think we were just all able to connect about how we felt and get together to just say if there was some changes that needs to be to, that we felt as students that weren't getting done, and we were able to share our opinion, and we felt like it really got out there, so there was something done. And we planned with our new members to hopefully have a great relationship with them as well as, not only as friends, but maybe as a family too, I would say, but that's how we are.
That's nice to hear.
To add one thing I really liked about this committee that it was new. I'd heard nothing about it walking into it. I knew nothing, and I really enjoyed all the bumps and curves we all had to endure to figure everything out, such as the survey. We kind of ran out of time on that. And now that for next year, we have a plan, and I'm really grateful that I got to be a part of the first committee here.
I know you said you didn't get to do the student survey just because of time, but I feel like for your first year, you guys accomplished a lot, so very well done.
Thank you.
Hey, congratulations on all the work. I mean, you guys did a great job. Thank you.
Okay. I wonder if you might have homework or other plans on this beautiful evening in May. You certainly can take this opportunity if you and your families would like to head on out. We have numerous other items on our agenda that I can promise you will not be as interesting or fun or as exciting as that. So, girls, we'll see you tomorrow. Thank you so much. And then we will segue into our next item. Ms. Kathy Gavin from NTDSE, the Niles Township District for Special Education, is here this evening. In your board packet, I included the Articles of Agreement that our district has with NTDSE, and Kathy is going to provide an overview. Kathy is the Chief School Business Official for NTDSE. So welcome, Kathy. Thank you for coming out to our meeting this evening.
Thank you for having us. We're very excited to be invited, and we are very excited to speak about our Articles of Agreement. I know Dr. Whitaker said she included them in your packet. They are the first revision that we've had since 2015. And our district has grown quite a bit, as well as all of our member districts are growing and changing and evolving. So it was a good time for us to come together as committees, as superintendents, as schools' business managers, as your directors of special education, to really look at the Articles of Agreement and see what was good and what could be tweaked. There was really three things that the, that were major changes to the three kind of highlights of the document that were changing, and one was really just cleaning up language to make it more transparent and really understandable. There's been changes in the seats and districts administration, as well as school business managers, and we thought like just kind of cleaning up that language, the legal part of it would be helpful to people who were using the document. And then the other changes really focused on the finance, the finance piece for both NTDSE and mostly for how it impacted our member districts. So as we will, I'll highlight the changes, but just as a precursor, the financial changes were kind of done at the very nitty-gritty, granular level by several meetings with the school business managers. All of the districts were represented, and then those changes were taken to the superintendents for their input and approval before they were included in the articles for the boards, for all of the boards to review. The first thing, so Niles Township District for Special Education runs the Extended School Year Program for the township, both for NTDSE students as well as students in your own districts who may qualify for ESY. And in the past, when we have a host location, we usually run it at Malloy, and then we rent a building. That formula has been kind of always just districts keeping track of their own costs so that NTDSE can pay them. The business managers came up with a more of a solid, just $1,000 per classroom to cover any usage that we would have in your schools for the fiscal, for the extended school year, and that will be effective in next summer in 2024. As I said earlier, we have grown quite a bit as a district. When my superintendent and I started, we were nine satellite locations. We are now 22 in the last, I would say, 13 years. So we are very grateful for districts that can host our satellite classrooms during the school year, and that's always an ongoing discussion because your needs for space in your own buildings are always evolving, just as we are. So that's a discussion every year when we're looking for placements. So the business managers sat down to kind of really work on what would be a suggested hosted number of classrooms. There's two numbers that NTDSE relies quite a bit upon when we're allocating costs or looking at enrollment. One of them is the sixth day of enrollment, which is the number of students enrolled in your own district as compared to other districts within the township. And the other date that NTDSE often uses as a marker is March 1st, just to always take that uniform date and time when we're measuring usage or number of students in our program. So the business managers chose both of those factors, the sixth day of enrollment, which may be different from school to school district based on your first day, as well as the March 1st. Took a three-year look back to kind of smooth out any bumps where you'd have that anomaly year, added those, the three-year average for the second enrollment, plus the three-year average for the NTDSE enrollment on March 1st, added them together, and then divided that by two. And then we take that percentage and we kind of apply it to the number of classrooms that we would, that we would suggest that could be hosted. It's not a binding thing, it's more just of a guide to kind of make it equitable and a starter for a discussion. And then after that, that came a, that kind of transitioned into the satellite classroom fee rental that's paid to host districts. Traditionally, I started as the business manager in 2008. The rental fee has always been $15,000 per classroom. Based on this new formula, the business managers had recommended that when looking at the recommended number of satellite classrooms that a district could host, there would be a bonus paid if your district took in over what was recommended. And again, that recommended number is simply a suggestion, it's not binding. So for every classroom that a district takes, it's $15,000, and then anything above that would be $25,000. So if a district was recommended to take two classrooms and they took three, they'd get $30,000 for the first two, and then a bump for $25,000 on that one. We are really, we try at NTDSE to be very transparent with our finances. Aside from grants, the majority of our fund balance comes from our member districts paying fees to the, to the co-op. And so each year, there is something, an existing thing in our Articles of Agreement that we do have a fund balance committee. So each year in late May, early June, all of the business managers come together. I give them a review of our previous year's financials, our cash flow of the current fiscal year, and our projection for next year. And then based on that information, the business managers make a recommendation if there's any excess cash or any excess fund balance left, and if that would be returned, that's generally returned to the districts. For the last five years, that money has gone into Fund 60 for the Malloy renovation, which is ongoing. But we did want to put a formula into place before it becomes necessary to give back excess cash, and so the business managers came up with that last bullet point. We're really just looking at the March 1st NTDSE enrollment and taking the three-year average, and then once that percentage is calculated, will we be multiplied by whatever the lump sum is that the business managers have seen as excess cash? And then that would be, that would determine the refund or credit to your districts. So those were really the three highlights. There were some simple changes made, again, as language, but that was really the three biggest focal points of our document. Any questions?
So this evening is, is the first reading of the Articles of Agreement. We are not taking any action as a board on the articles tonight. In June, when we meet, this will be an action item that will be asking the board to take a vote on and to actually approve. So between now and our June meeting, as you're reading this over and thinking about the presentation from Ms. Gavin, if you have any further questions, please reach out to me. If I don't have the answers, I'll be turning to Ms. Gavin for those answers as well. So it is important, and we do have a deadline of the June meeting, so we do need to keep this moving along. But with anything of this nature, we do two readings so that you have plenty of time to think it through, have your questions answered, et cetera. So I think your presentation was really helpful in hitting the highlights. But are there any questions from board members on the Articles of Agreement at this time? No?
Okay. I'd just like to say in closing, I'm very grateful and want to give a thank you to Jeff. He was very helpful during the whole process, actually writing extreme math on the whiteboard in our training room, like it was a contest. But, you know, NTDSE is really just taking districts' input, and so I, we're really, you know, business managers are telling me, we don't, we think it should have this, or we should, we think it should have that, and then I'm going back and crunching the numbers and, you know, presenting them. And, and so I feel like the financial formula within the Articles of Agreement is very reflective of buy-in from administrators that worked on it. So thank you for having us.
Thank you. Okay, the next item, on May 10th, the Board of Education underwent training by the Illinois Association of School Boards, which is an organization that the board is members of. And Diana was going to give a brief report about that session.
Hi. On May 10th, Arlana, one of the representatives came down and spent quite a while with us. It was very informative. It was very informative, really good bonding amongst all of us here. We did discuss board responsibilities, our relationships and behaviors, how to identify developmental next steps, evaluating just the board and its process in general. It's a, you know, big learning curve being on the board and just learning the process and what we, what we can and can't do and how to do those. So it was really, really great. And I think everyone had a really good time with that.
Thank you. Next up is the superintendent's report for May, some of which we've already touched upon this evening, but I'll hit a few highlights. In the last month, Jeff Baer, the Assistant Superintendent and myself, met with the ownership at the Holiday Inn on Tui. We wanted to just touch base with them to talk about our experience now that our last asylum-seeking family has moved out of the hotel. We wanted to just talk, share our experiences with them as they did with us. So that was a really productive conversation and we appreciated that. The Lakani family has been a wonderful partner to our school district. Their children attended Fairview and they're very invested in our community. So we really appreciated them taking the time to talk with us. In addition to that, we were able to provide math in-service on the new math curriculum. This isn't typical in school districts, but we were able to secure through the work of Colleen and her leadership of the math district leading, learning team. We were able to secure representatives to come on out and work with our teachers for a full day, introducing them to our new math curriculum that we'll be implementing next school year. We're really excited to receive those materials that we've now put in purchase orders for. So our staff can, you know, have all of the books and whatnot that they need to prepare for the students in the fall. So we're really happy that we're able to give them that initial training even before the school year started. Oftentimes that happens over the summer in schools or even in the beginning of the school year. In addition, I've been working closely with NTDSE as we will be hosting Satellite Classroom here at Fairview next year. It'll be a kindergarten through second grade classroom. And we are also promising to reserve a second classroom space for kindergarten through second grade students if that program grows throughout the year, which we do find oftentimes children at that age level are identified and needing those classroom spaces. So Fairview will be providing two classroom spaces and we're really looking forward to working with NTDSE and their staff and welcoming them to Fairview in the fall. We continue to pack classrooms. I am very proud of our custodian team. As teachers are packing boxes, we're moving them out of the rooms and storing them wherever we can find space. Because, you know, one thing I felt very strongly about is that I did not want our students attending school in classrooms full of boxes. I think that sends the wrong message about learning and what we're doing. And these last four or five weeks of school are important. Our teachers teach through the very last day of school. And so we wanted to make sure the setting for learning was one conducive for that. So we continue to pack and prepare for being out of our spaces on June 9th. The interior construction and demolition will start on June 12th. So my wonderful team already knows we're working that weekend. Nobody can have plans. We'll do whatever we have to do to make sure we're ready to have those classrooms cleared for demolition to start and keep us on schedule. We are on schedule with our construction. We are receiving concrete loads, brickwork, roofing. Things are moving along really quickly now. So it's really exciting to see that progress and to know that we're on target. And we are also on budget, which is a good thing. But it's only May. No, just kidding. We plan on being on budget through the end of the project and I'm very positive that that can happen. And then finally, Ms. Carly Gross has taken on the lead of researching and developing the preschool program that will open in the fall of '24. Carly has been out visiting township programs as well as other North suburban preschool programs, just really trying to learn as much as we can so that when we're preparing to open our very own preschool, we'll, you know, hopefully have, you know, all the information we need to hit the ground running. So thank you Carly for stepping up and taking on that responsibility. And that is pretty much the highlights from the report. There's a lot more in there. I'm happy to answer any other questions that board members might have at this point in time. Okay, our last administrative report is a look at board policies. This is another one of those topics where we will always talk about them in one month. Allow the board to have time to think about it, process it, ask questions before you're actually adopting the policies by voting on them in June. So what we did to try to streamline this process is in the board packet, I did provide a summary sheet of the policies and the changes. I would recommend that board members read the policies as well as the summary so that you are fully aware of the complete policies. And this is a process that President Diakakis and I will continue to work on as we figure out, you know, the best way to really work through the policies. The majority of the policies in this grouping are policies that are changed due to, in addition to FISA law, which expands the criminal definition of grooming to include conduct outside of solely online or technology-based conduct. And so that addition to that law filters through almost all of the policies that we're talking about. So there are changes to the policies because of the change in the law. And those are types of things that, you know, really the board, you know, can talk about it, but you're really obligated to include in your policy. So this evening, I will quickly run through the policies if that's what the board would like to do. Yes? Okay. Two colon 110 is the first policy, qualifications, term and duties of board officers. I included the page number in the board package just so it was easier for you to reference. And again, for our veteran board members, I know this is repetitive for you, but being the first time through for our new board members, I think it's important. So bear with me. The summary of the change in this policy is simply a minor wording change that is required by law. The second policy, three colon 40, the title of that policy is Superintendent, page 41. Again, a minor stylistic change that's required by law. Four colon 60, purchases and contracts. Additional wording has been added regarding contractors working with students directly. So this would be, an example of this would be our Northlight Theater Partnership, where we have an outside vendor coming in and working directly with our students. They would be required by law to follow all of the changes in FISA law and it's our responsibility to hold them accountable to that. Five colon 30, hiring process and criteria. There's a new paragraph requiring that sexual misconduct employment history review, EHR. You'll see EHR sprinkled throughout the policies. That's the change required by law in that policy. Five colon 90, abused and neglected child reporting. Another new paragraph requiring procedures to be developed to notify parents and guardians if an employee has been disciplined for misconduct. This is a change required by law. Five colon 125, personal technology and social media usage and conduct. Again, additional wording along the lines of EHR to update the policy and make it more clear. Five colon 150, personnel records. New requirements added to comply with employment history review requirements due to the law. Five colon 260, student teachers. Student teachers are required to undergo EHR requirements to work with students. So you can see how these policies are all being brought up to comply with the law. And finally, the last one is not related to FISA law, but it's about the library media program. It was updated due to feedback from members of press. So all of the, we are a member of the Illinois Association of School Boards. We subscribe to press. They have a committee that goes through policies and makes recommendations to school districts. And this was updated to include procedures that Fairview already has in place. So there's really no changes for Fairview on this one. So that's a very quick overview of the policies. Again, I would really encourage you to read through the actual policies and familiarize yourself with those and certainly to reach out with any questions that you have between now and the June board meeting. So if there are questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, we can carry on. Okay, thank you. Okay, next up are the board committees. As you are aware, we reorganized the board and so this was sort of a month of kind of trying to catch up. So we do have an NTDSE representative. So thank you very much to the board members who volunteered to be a part of that. We did miss the May meeting and I have not received the board briefs or the updates from that meeting just yet. But we will include them at the June board meeting for the board's reference. And the PTA liaison representative, again, I believe it was an executive committee meeting this month. Was it a general meeting? It was a general meeting, I'm sorry. And we did not have our liaison at that meeting again because we were in transition. So our intention would be to get those dates on your calendars. So going forth, we will have representation at both committees.
All right, regarding Freedom of Information Act requests, I can report that there were three Freedom of Information Act requests received since the last board meeting and they were handled appropriately. And information and correspondence?
Yes, we received one correspondence. We received a correspondence. We received a note from Mary Ann Brown thanking the board for the Fairview backpack and binder, but mostly for the kind words on her retirement from the board.
Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. At this time, I'd like to invite members of the audience to address the board in public comment. If you wish to address the board, please come to the microphone, state your name. A three-minute time limit will be set. The board secretary will keep time. Would anybody like to come up? I can also confirm that there were no online public comments received as well. Moving on to action item, have a motion and a second, please, to place the amended budget on public display, set date of public hearing on June 21st, 2023. Second. Will the board secretary please call the roll call vote?
Before, before the board votes, I've asked Mr. Fair to provide you a brief overview of what the amended budget is coming to you with, why we're amending the budget at this point in time. So Jeff will explain that right now and then we'll move on to the vote.
Thank you. The reason for the amended budget this evening, and we discussed it briefly at the budget in the fall, the final budget presentation of the fall, was to account for any cash flow timeline things from the construction. We didn't at that time know what we were going to have as far as payments in this fiscal year. And because many of the construction costs are spread over two different fiscal years, we wanted there to be an accurate representation in our budget for those capital project costs. We don't typically use the amended budget ever for operating funds to account for changes like line item issues or things that may be over budget in one area, under budget in another. We just make, we like to make the changes for larger issues like this and that's been the last two years. So this is really just a timing thing. There was also a change from our audit where a certain item was taken out of a different account code, which pushes us over a small administrative cost area. So we need to bring that down as well and talk, talking to our auditor. So those are the two, one's much bigger, I think it's $2.5 million as far as the construction cost change. And again, that was costs that were budgeted for, but they're coming up in this year. What we tried to do, we tried to get, because of lead times, we tried to order a lot of the technology items and the furniture items well in advance. Those purchases, even though the purchase orders have been put in for those items, they may actually be paid in next fiscal year because we just wanted to get those ordered. We haven't, we're not going to take or send payment until we actually receive those orders. But this is just a case to make sure that we've had all that accounted for. If you have any questions about the particular items, please let me know. We're going to have this on display in the district office for 30 days. But again, it's really to focus on those capital costs and again, the administrative costs to be in line with our following discussion with our auditor. And next month, we'll actually, next month is typically the month when we have any budgeted transfers, we'll be passing those resolutions next month.
All right, will the secretary please call a roll call vote?
Diana Diakakis?
Yes.
Sargon Gulyana?
Yes.
Jaclyn Boujde?
Yes.
Raphael Kavor?
Yes.
Sage Philip?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
Yes.
Esther Tumusa?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any items for future consideration for the next board meeting?
I would just like to remind the board that within the first 90 days of being seated, you have to complete an Open Meetings Act training. I will be registering you for that training through IASB. So you'll be receiving a communication with them, from them as far as how to get, actually get into the training and take the training. Once that's complete, we just ask that you provide us a proof of the training and then we'll be posting that completion on the Fairview website. Correct, it's an online training. There are a couple of other trainings that will come in that bundle, but that's really the first one that you need to accomplish within the first 90 days. The others, there's a longer window. The other item for future consideration, I am working on securing committee meeting dates for next year, some of which have now been established. This is something we're doing new this year so that you all can have the dates for committee meetings on your calendars. We can publish them on our website just to help us be a little bit ahead on that. And, you know, all of you have busy schedules, so we want to get those dates on the calendar. If we've scheduled a meeting, we don't have any agenda items, we'll simply cancel it. But I think it's better to have those dates secured in your calendar. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Yes, okay. All right, can I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting of the Fairview Board of Education at 7:46 PM?
So moved.
A second. Will the secretary please call a roll call vote?
Diana Diakakis?
Yes.
Sargon Gulyana?
Yes.
Jaclyn Boujde?
Yes.
Raphael Kavor?
Yes.
Sage Philip?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
Yes.
Esther Tumusa?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
So at this time, we just take your seats, and shortly we will go on the floor table.
Okay.
So at this time, we're going to have a brief reception honoring our retiring board members and welcoming our new board members. And so at this time, I am adjourning the meeting, CDA, to be continued with the new board sitting at the table in about fifteen minutes. Okay.
So call, call to order, I'm calling to order the reorganizational meeting of the Fairview District Seventy-two Board of Education. It's April twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, at eight twenty-eight PM. I'll call roll to determine if we have a quorum. Diana Diakakis?
Yes.
Jackie Boujde?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
We need Christine.
Raphael Kavor?
Yes.
Sage Philip? Yes. Esther Tumusa?
Yes.
And I am here. So first, we will appoint, do the appointment of president pro tempora. By consensus of the board, we'll appoint a president pro tempora. Next, we will do the election of the officers. As established in board policy, the office of president, vice president and secretary are terms of two years. Elections will be held in the order of president, vice president and then secretary. Nomination of candidates can be made by the candidate themselves or another board member. Nominations of candidates for the offices do not need to be seconded. A motion to close the nominations, though, does require a second and a voice vote. Dr. Whitaker will keep the record. Voting for candidates for office must be conducted verbally. If more than one person is nominated, a roll call vote will be conducted for each candidate in the order of nomination. Voting continues until a member receives majority of the votes cast. The office of president is elected first. Upon conclusion of the election of president, the newly elected president removes, resumes the direction of the meeting and conducts the election of the vice president secretary. Is everybody okay with me taking the role of president pro tempora?
Yeah.
So we will start with the nomination of president. Do we have any nominations for president? I nominate Diana Diakakis. Is there any other nominations? Okay, let's take a roll call vote on this. Christine? Vote?
Yes.
Raphael?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Sage?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and Diana?
Congratulations.
All right. I held this long enough.
We'll move on to nominations of vice president. Anyone have any nominations that they would like to ask or say?
Sargon Guliana?
Yes, it's for Sargon.
So, yes.
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 Okay, Sargon, you continue as vice president. And finally, we will do secretary. Any nominations for secretary?
I nominate Jackie Boujde.
Yes, for Jackie.
Yes.
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 All right, Jackie?
Yes.
Your secretary. All right, we're going to move to discuss the interest in committees and representatives. The newly elected president appoints members of the board to serve on standing committees of the board as established in policy number two one five zero. The president and vice president are automatically members of the executive committee. It is recommended that the board members express interest in membership on standing committees and as representatives of the district on standing organizations. The appointment for these positions will take place at the regular meeting on Wednesday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. So at this moment, I'm going to ask each of you your interest in any of the committees. We have the education technology committee. We would need a chairperson and one member. Finance personnel committee, chairperson and one member. Building, grounds and transportation, chairperson and one member.
I would like to be on the finance committee, and as a backup, I would be on the building and grounds, transportation.
Jackie?
I'd like to be on the building and grounds, transportation, and as a backup, be on education.
I'll be ready for technology and finance backup.
Esther? Education and technology. And as a backup, Ed Redd. We'll get to those next.
Do you have a second choice?
Grounds and transportation.
So, so each of these, just before we get to you, each of these committees of the board have two board members on each of the committees. So following this evening, Diana will have to think about, you know, who she wants to assign to each committee. So that's why it's important for us to have two options, just in case your first choice doesn't work out that way.
So first choice, building grounds and transportation, second choice, finance.
Christine?
First choice, education technology, second choice, building grounds and transportation.
Okay, the next item, we will talk about representatives to committees and organizations. We have four. NTDSC board will be one representative and one alternate. The meetings are held monthly. IASB, one representative attend dinner meetings two times a year and to serve as the board's delegate at the annual conference. PTA liaison, one representative and one alternate to attend monthly general and executive PTA meetings. And Ed Redd, one representative who attends the monthly member meetings during legislative season, annual kickoff luncheon and the annual dinner meeting. Sargon? Any interest?
And I'd have to check my schedule out at this time. I'll let you know.
Okay, Jackie? Ed Redd? Can help out? I can be a backup for something else. Sage? Any interest? You can, if, if, we don't need to discuss this at this moment. If you want to look into it and let me know via email, that would be fine, too.
Okay.
Does that work for everybody, or does somebody have an interest? Do you have an interest?
Yeah, PTA liaison is, would be an interest.
Or myself, you can put me first for Ed Redd, and second option, IASB.
Esther? Ed Redd, please.
I could do the IASB as well.
Did you want to look into it and give me that's okay? Okay, perfect. All right, moving along. Appointment of recording secretary, it is recommend, it is recommended that Ms. Drew Sabres, if I pronounce it correctly, be appointed to continue her role as recording secretary for the Board of Education with remuneration and reimbursement for expenses incurred in connection with the execution of her duties as per board policy two one one zero. Can I have a motion and a second to prove that Ms. Drew be appointed to continue her role as recording secretary for the Board of Education?
So moved.
I'll second. Secretary, can you please roll call? Sage?
Oh, yes.
Esther?
Esther? Yes.
Sargon?
Yes.
Jackie ACS? Diana?
Yes.
Raphael?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
All right, Drew is continuing as our recording secretary. All right, establish regular meeting dates, time and place. The school board is required to establish the dates, time and place for the regular meetings. A voice, voice, a voice vote is sufficient to establish the regular meeting arrangements. The dates are publicized in the local newspaper as a legal notice. And I have a motion and a second to approve the dates, time and place for the regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
So in your packet, we continue the pattern of meeting on Wednesdays. Typically, the regular meeting starts at seven PM with closed session just before the regular meeting. So we are recommending that we stay with those Wednesdays. But certainly, we can always amend that calendar, you know, if something were to come up and board members all had, you know, a conflict at the same date. But, you know, we could also consider another day of the week if that was something that the board wanted to consider. For tonight's purposes, we just continued with the same pattern that had already been established. So it's entirely up to you, but at this point, we're, but forth calendar of the Wednesday meetings.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, goes again, say nay. All right, thank you. Finally, public comment. At this time, I'd like to invite members of the audience to address the board in public comment. If anyone has public comment, they can come up. Okay. Can I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting of the Fairview Board of Education at eight forty PM?
So moved.
Second.
Right, will the secretary please call a roll call vote? Sargon Guliana?
Yes.
Sage Philip?
Yes.
Esther Tumusa?
Yes.
Diana Diakakis?
Yes.
Raphael Kavor?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
Yes.
Jaclyn Boujde?
Yes.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.